Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in thy son's command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guard, keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you very much. On behalf of members of council, you have a lovely voice and we appreciate you presenting the National Anthem to us this evening. Thank you very much. This time I'm going to call on councillor Maves to lead some prayer, please.
Yes, let's recite the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. Members of council, good evening. The adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of May 10, 2010 is the first item on the agenda. Kind of a motion, please. Moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Maves. Any comments? Yes?
Just at the top of page four, CD 201004, shows carried unanimously. I didn't vote on that. I declared a conflict, which should just be rejected.
Okay, so noted. All those in favor of the minutes? Thank you, the motion is carried. Move on to disclosures of a continuing interest by the members of council. Councillor Wing?
Yes, from Hugh Business at Community Services, the motorcycle enthusiast matter because of medical disorientation.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, MW 201033, neighborhood of St. David's sidewalk construction.
Okay, so noted. And I have a conflict with regard to cheque number 336556 payable to myself. Thank you. Move on to presentations. And members of council this evening, we have members of the city's disability advisory committee who will be making a presentation. I'm going to call on our clerk to introduce the individuals, please. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, your worship. This week is the annual National Access for Awareness Week, and as we routinely do every year at this time, members of the committee come by, update council and/or provide some recognition to businesses or organizations in our community. We have with us this evening our Chair Paisley Janvery Poole, committee members Sandy Bird, Angie Demell, Anna Toplin, and Anita Mackenzie. Hopefully, I didn't miss anybody. And we're going to be giving two awards this evening. The first award is our Patrick Cummings Award. This is the award that we present to... It's in the box. This is the award we present to a business or organization in our community that goes above and beyond in making their facilities barrier-free and accessible. Obviously, for most of you, you realize it was named after former Niagara Falls City councillor Patrick Cummings, who was a champion of our committee and was the first chair when the committee was revived in 1997. And I see that his son Dan's in the audience, so I'd like to acknowledge Dan as well. So the recipient this year for the award is the Holy Trinity Anglican Church. If anybody's familiar with this church, you know it's quite a beautiful facility just outside of... Just before you get into Chippewa proper. And even though it's an older building, they've gone to great lengths to make it barrier-free, accessible, make it barrier-free. They installed elevator and automatic doors. And usually, when we give one of these awards, obviously, members of our committee have been through the facility and can attest to the strides that are made to make the facility barrier-free and accessible. So, your worship, if maybe you can go down and call on our Chair Paisley Janvery Poole, and representing the Niagara... Sorry, the Holy Trinity Anglican Church will be rector Janet Cashin, Doug Hicks, and there may be some other reps from the church, so if they can come forward.
The Patrick Cummings Award is presented by the Mayor's Disability Advisory Committee and the Holy Trinity Anglican Church. In recognition of going above and beyond and creating a barrier-free environment, this day, May 31, 2010, by Mayor Eric H. Kett Selsey.
My pleasure to make this presentation to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments you'd like to make?
No, it took almost three years to get it done. The time went through contractors and pages and pages of forms for, you know, what trillion grants and everything. I don't really guess, but it was well worth it.
Congratulations. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
We're also presenting tonight a certificate of excellence to Niagara Falls Transit. Although we don't like to toot our own horns, obviously, we've had to make great strides in the area of accessibility. And I know Dave Stewart, our general manager, has been a good advocate, and he regularly meets with the committee. Dave's going to be doing a PowerPoint presentation, which I think goes on for about 20 minutes. But prior to that, if Dave could just come up and accept the award on behalf of Niagara Transit, and then he'll do his PowerPoint presentation, which is actually less than 20 minutes. I don't know.
We're very proud of what Niagara Falls is doing. The City of Niagara Falls, Mayor's Disability Advisory Committee, certificate of excellence in recognition of improving barrier-free accessibility, and that means the buses, is therefore granted to Niagara Falls Transit for efforts towards improving accessibility in the city of Niagara Falls.
Thank you very much. So Dave will do a brief presentation, which will show you how we're trying to make Niagara Transit an accessible service for everybody in the community. Pressure's on, 20 minutes. The old peepers are going, so need the cheaters now, and I feel like I'm part of the accessible world. Mayor Selsey, members of council, fellow staff, ladies and gentlemen, this is one of the true privileges of my job, and that's having the opportunity to share with you some of the real exciting initiatives, especially the accessibility initiatives, that Niagara Falls Transit staff are working on in concert with the Mayor's Disability Advisory Committee. And for those of you who know this group, they're extremely knowledgeable, very engaged, and I can assure you, very spirited group at times. And their guidance and support has really been instrumental in us moving some of these initiatives forward, and I thank you very much for that. I'll start off showing some slides. Make sure I work this properly. Nope. Here's a few slides of our facility, and this is historically, when someone came to our building and needed to enter a door at grade, this is how they would come into our building. This is actually the back door of Niagara Falls Transit. And this door is always locked. This is where our operators, our mechanics, enter each day. So if someone had to enter our building up until a year and a half or so ago, this is how they came into our building. So you can see that although it's technically accessible, it certainly isn't the most dignified way to enter our building. And then, once you get through this door, if someone happens to notice you come by the building, they can open it for you. You've got another door to negotiate, then you've got to work your way up to the offices to come to the front of the building, where you can buy your pass, or so on and so forth. So as I mentioned, it's not the most customer-friendly or dignified way to enter our building. Here's just a look at that door going the other way. So you can see there's a bit of a grade coming up the asphalt to get to that doorway. So if it's inclement weather, it's a challenge. It can be icier on this area. And the other thing that's a little concerning is that the buses actually leave the garage heading out towards Bridge Street off in the distance. So if you're coming up that section of asphalt, you may have a 40-foot bus staring in the face coming out of the garage. So it's not a battle you're going to win. So it really was not a very good setup at all, and it's something that we had to address. And here we are today. I'd like to thank Marie Cutler. She's actually administrative assistant at Charrivan for helping me out with some of these pictures. And you can see that she's working her way up the ramp there. And again, I looked at this initially as saying, well, let's build a ramp across the front of the building, and we'll make the place accessible. Because historically, there was about a four-foot concrete platform there that you would have to negotiate. And after talking with some of the people in the Mayor's Disability Advisory Committee, they've got some wonderful resources, like our very own Jason McLean and Brian Con, who knows everything there is to know about design standards. And they introduced me to something called FAD, which actually stands for Facility Accessibility Design Standards. And it's something that the region uses, and I've got a slide coming just to tell you what it's all about. But I mean, even the smallest things, I've got my little laser pointer here, like, I don't want to hurt anybody's retina out here, like the height of these rails, the rail on the bottom, the width between these rails, the slope of the ramp, even the area that you can have a run before the person needs an area to rest, has to all be designed in. So what seemingly is a simple design, believe me, there's a lot of factors that have to be thought about, and the area that you have to work within to make this happen. And I didn't take pictures of the inside of the building, but after you go through the automatic door openers, we've redesigned the vestibule reception area inside, so that counter heights are lower, and that there's cutouts. So somebody that's in a mobility device can actually, you know, arms' height and get close enough that they can actually make a transaction, buy a monthly pass, things of that nature. So we had to do some unique design work inside of this older structure to make it all happen. So this essentially captures the essence of FADs. It really, the intent is to capture the Ontario Human Rights Code in terms of respecting the dignity of persons with disabilities. And the second part of that is the standard embodies universal design that recognizes the broad diversity of people who use facilities. So you have to make sure that your design captures whatever the physical disability that a person may have, visually or otherwise, and that also has to be done in a dignified manner. So some might argue that the back door of our building was accessible, but is it dignified? Hardly. So you have to capture both of these things to encapsulate the whole thing of FADs. So it's kind of a unique document, and I can assure you, it's very thorough and thick. But whatever the issue is, they've got a design standard to address that. So it's pretty helpful, to say the least. And here's Marie again, and this, we've seen the kind of our building, and this is one of our newer buses, and you can see that this is one of the security positions that Marie is sitting in. I'll jump to the next slide quickly, then come back to this one, and I'll show you some of the points to be mindful of. Whoops. This way. Okay. So on each of our new conventional buses, there's two positions, one rearward-facing and one forward-facing. Of course, each of them have tie-downs for the various mobility devices and the individual in them, but they're modified in a different way. And the stop request buttons are modified. And then, last but not least, there's various levels of flip-up seating to allow egress and so on for people that need to get into those areas and some proper movement. Okay, so now we're back to Marie. Little things that you just wouldn't notice to kind of do the untrained eye is, here's your stop request button. It's just a little pressure-sensitive strip, because she may not be able to, in her wheelchair, reach up and get the stop request cord. So little things like that have to be addressed. She's in the rearward-facing position, and that's a spot that would be used for somebody who has a high level of mobility. So she can just wheel onto the bus, go back to that position, and kind of pale little park backwards into that position. So just on her back there, there's kind of a padded column here, and then all she really needs to do is reach around, and there's a lap belt that she would pull around her, and then she's secure to travel on the bus. So she needs really no other assistance from the operator or otherwise. If somebody needed more assistance in the spot just to her side here, there's another area where there's flip-up seats, and there's different restraint systems there. There's ones that would capture the wheelchair or scooter, whatever the person may be in for their device, and then devices like a lap belt and even shoulder belts if need be. And that would require assistance either by a personal attendant or by the bus operator, who could help that individual out. This is a shot of exterior of the bus. This is one of our beautiful new Nova buses, and you can see Marie's just getting off the bus. And again, I'll jump back to a slide, our head rather, and then I'll show you some of the features, then we'll have a quick peek at this one again. So the bus operator can lower the bus and activate the ramp for ease of boarding and lighting. There's wider doorways, again, for ease of movement of the mobility devices. And the customers can easily make a turn into the security position, but of course, only after paying a fare. No free ride here. And then the wide doorways and ramps are also helpful for seniors and young families. So if the seniors have little shopping carts, or the families have bags, and so on and so forth, it makes it easier. So the wide doorways are not just for those in personal mobility devices. So now I'm back to this one. When the buses are lowered, they're only nine inches off the ground. So when the ramp is deployed, especially in an area where there's a curb, the ramp becomes almost horizontal. The worst-case scenario would be that there'd be a six-to-one ramp, which virtually anybody can manage. But when there's a curb there, it's quite flat, and you can see the wider doorways there, which make it easier to enter and exit. There's additional lighting above the doorways, so if it's in the evening, it illuminates the area. You can see that we've made sure that the fully accessible deckles are here, that so individuals would know. There's an exterior speaker just in this area, so that the operator can actually communicate with the customer when they're boarding or lighting, if there's need to have some communication there. So the new buses are certainly much more attractive in handling individuals in post-personal mobility devices. This is a little bit kind of in a chronological order of some of the things that we've done in the last few years to make our fleet more accessible. So you can see back in 2007, which was only three years ago, we essentially had no accessible buses in our fleet whatsoever. We had 10 low-floor buses, but they had no ramps or security positions. So unless someone was able to hop nine inches, you couldn't ride those buses. You couldn't board those buses. So what we did in 2008 is essentially we righted a wrong. We retrofitted those 10 buses with ramps and security positions, so that at that point, it brought us up to just over a third of our fleet became accessible for the community to enjoy. Also in 2008, this was a very good year for us, we purchased our first of the four Easy Rider buses. And naturally, they were low-floor, security positions, and had the ramp and so on and so forth. So in just over a one-year window, we went from essentially no accessible buses to 14, which brought us up to over half of our fleet became accessible. So that was a wonderful year for us with returns of accessibility enhancements. In 2009, we purchased our four Nova buses. You just saw that one just in the previous slide. So that brought us up to 70% of our fleet. So it's our intent to buy, hopefully, early 2012, to be fully accessible, to have the entire fleet accessible. As we buy new buses, we'll retire the old ones and bring on the new buses. So what does that mean? 2007, again, we have no accessible buses, so naturally, we have no accessible routes. I put an asterisk, an asterisk next to accessible, because if we say we have an accessible route out there, it means at all times, there'll be an accessible bus on that route. So you would never have a situation where you got out to someplace in the morning, wherever it may be, shopping, a medical appointment, and then three hours later, there's a bus comes by that's a high-floor bus with steps and so on. That would never happen. At all times, there's going to be an accessible bus on that route, we guarantee it. So in 2008, after we had started the retrofit program, those other 10 buses, we had one accessible route. By 2009, five accessible routes, and that's kind of where we currently are today. So half the fleet, or the route structure is accessible. In 2010, later this year, we'll bring on three more routes, which will give us 80% of our routes being accessible. And the way we determined which routes are accessible, as we rolled them out, was based on conversation with the Mayor's Disability Advisory Committee. They essentially picked the routes that they would like to see deployed first. I mean, who better to ask than the people that are going to medical appointments, going shopping, educational, leisure trips, whatever it may be, to tell us which ones to roll out? So thank you for that information, and as we get the buses online, we're rolling those out. And again, by 2012, 2012, we hope to be fully accessible. Some of the challenges we have that lay ahead of us, and some of them are quite daunting, is the infrastructure enhancements. The first one is bus stops. We have over 650 bus stops throughout this community, and that's a relatively large number, and I can assure you, they're every shape, and size, and grade, and lighting. And again, some of the things that seem seemingly simple can be a challenge. I was talking to Jeff Eden one time at the City of Welland, again, a wealth of knowledge when it comes to accessibility standards and features, and Jeff's blind. And I was talking about just a ramp from the curb going up this street, and he says, "Well, Dave, what about tactile strips?" I said, "Well, what do you mean tactile strips?" And essentially, it's either some kind of tactile material that has a different grade to it, or it's cement cuts, things of that nature. He says, "If I'm walking along, how do I know that I'm still on a walkway or I'm four feet on the road? I have no way of knowing." So you have to differentiate between the pathway from the curb out to where the bus would stop from the road. So little things like that, and there's a myriad of them, that have to be, you have to be mindful of when you're building your stops. Communications and marketing. This is an area that we have to do a better job at. I mean, we need to buy a TTY machine at our office, so someone who cannot speak can text us with information, get information back through our receptionist and our scheduling people to help them out. We need to look at our website and make enhancements to our website. We may need to bring out flyers that are embossed with braille, so people who have visual impairments can understand the route structure and how to contact us. There's a lot of things we have to do here, and again, we're going to need the help and guidance of the committee to make those decisions. Awareness training. We've recently introduced a program called START with our bus operators, and it's a customer service program, but also has a component that involves sensitivity and awareness training. So our operators, when an individual's boarding the bus that may have visually or otherwise some type of impairment, they can recognize that better and know different ways to appropriately handle that situation. And that's gone over extremely well, and we continue to do that with all new operators. Technology aids. These are some of the technologies that are available today that are going to help us get there. Next up, you may remember, we did a pilot program last summer with one of our fall shuttle buses, whereby we took some of the units that were on the snowplows that weren't active in the summer, these vehicle logic units, they were GPS-based units, and put them on the buses. I mean, obviously, they're not being used in the snowplows. What better way to try them out than to get them free and put them on the buses? And what that allowed us to do is, because of this GPS-based technology, is as the bus, and Kent knows, we took them on one of our maiden voyages, we hijacked them and took them down Lundy's Lane, what it does is, it knows where the stops are. So as it approaches a stop, say it's Lundy's Lane in Dorchester, it knows when it's within, say, 100 meters, and automatically, a little voice will come on and say, "Next bus stop, Lundy's Lane, Dorchester." So, and also, at the same time, there's a little LED ticker tape that scrolls across the front of the bus that says, you know, Lundy's Lane, Dorchester. So whether you've got a hearing impairment or a visual impairment, you'll know when the next stop is arriving on your bus. So off you get. You don't have to sit there and ask the bus operator, "Are we there yet? Are we there yet?" You can just get on in a dignified manner, get off the bus when you hear the information. So that's one of the technologies we'll be looking at in the very near future, the next stop announcements. Smart shelters, there, again, there's many different features coming out of smart shelters. We need to enhance the size of some of our shelters, so someone in a personal mobility device can get into the shelter, maneuver around in inclement weather. We've got to look at the concrete pads that we have there to make sure that they meet their needs, and there isn't different grade changes. We've got situations right now, like at Morrison and Dorchester, where there needs some road reconstruction, where we've got a foot-and-a-half drop from the shelter to the road bed, and I realize that'll be addressed, but it's a real challenge for us right now, and people with, you know, visual impairments and mobility issues, to utilize those stops other than standing on the road, which of course is not the safest situation. Within the shelters, we can look at things like the next bus system, so it tells people when the next bus is arriving. Again, with the GPS-based technology, it can tell them that it's going to be there in seven minutes, the next bus 14 minutes, whatever it may be. So again, they don't have to sit there and stand in the elements. They can be on nice seats and perhaps even a heated environment in the near future. So we need to do things with the shelters to make those a much more accommodating areas for people with various impairments. And last but not least is automated fare boxes. I'm happy to say that we've ordered new fare boxes, and they will be here later in the fall. And so if you're an individual getting on the bus that has maybe some mobility or dexterity issues, and it's difficult to get change, I mean, oftentimes, you'll see a senior especially get on a bus, sit down, try to find the change, and then while the bus is moving, get back up and go back to the operator to pay their fare, which again, is not a safe situation. So when you're getting into automated fare boxes, they'll have the ability, as when you come into City Hall, just to tap a little reader, and it'll basically decrement a fare off your card, and away you go. So much easier to use, and we can sell FOBS, we can do a number of different things to capture information. But again, it's just much easier to use, much more customer-friendly, and again, if you have some kind of, as they say, dexterity issues, it makes many of those problems go So again, I want to stand to the 20-minute window that gains a lot of me. And I just want to say again, on behalf of the staff at Niagara Falls Transit, that it's been an absolute delight to work with the Mayor's Disability Advisory Committee. They're true champions for public transit in our community, and that, again, you've been a wealth of information, a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of common sense, and we don't make a lot of mistakes twice. Things that you're already aware of, you're sharing with us. So again, on behalf of the staff at Niagara Falls Transit and Mr. Dren and myself, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Stewart, as well. We're very proud of your efforts as well. They may be raised by members of council for Mr. Stewart. Having seen none, we do thank you and acknowledge as well that our clerk is the liaison person who liaises with the Mayor's Disability Committee. And I wanted to announce as well, we're very excited about a special award that's being presented coming up this week. We're very pleased to have received some correspondence from Lorraine Nadeau, who's the chairperson of the National Access Awareness Week Committee. And she writes to us, telling us that, "Congratulations on your efforts to recognize those who strive to integrate persons with disabilities into community life. On behalf of the National Access Awareness Week Committee, I am pleased to inform you that Paisley Janvery Poole was selected to receive a Breaking the Barrier Award for her commitment to furthering the accessibility and integration of persons with disabilities." The award will be presented on Wednesday, June 2, 2010, at 11 o'clock at the Market Square, which are the ceremonies we attend for National Access Awareness each year, the Breaking the Barriers Award Ceremony. So I do extend congratulations, and I'd like to invite everybody to join with us to celebrate with Paisley on the receipt of this exceptional award. So congratulations, Paisley, to you. And, members of council, we do have a request for a resolution contained in your package this evening. The resolution is that the proclamation be declared, declaring the week of May 30 to June 5, 2010, as National Access Awareness Week in Niagara Falls, as requested by the committee. So I undertake that motion. Moved by councillor Diodati, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you once again for your efforts on behalf of those who are physically challenged. Thank you so much. Move on to the next presentation. We have municipal heritage awards this evening. I'm going to ask the clerk, as well as Janice Wing, councillor Wing, to join with us in acknowledging some special individuals who are with us this evening.
No, no.
Okay. Councillor Wing?
Not right, baby.
Okay, yes, please.
I guess we'll do them in the order in which staff prepared the notes for me. Our Ontario Heritage Trust Community Recognition Program recipients are here tonight, and the first one in the Built Heritage category is Jock Eensley. Jock, come on up. Although Jock prefers to work quietly in the background without publicity, he has written countless letters to the editor highlighting features he feels are important to the city and should be maintained at all costs. He was relentless in his determination to ensure all St. Church was well-protected. He was active on the committee which called for protection and preservation of the church building and all of its memorial contents. He pointed out that the pews in the church are solid oak, and there's nealers attached to them as well, and they're all directly attached to the 150-year-old floorboards, and nothing could be removed without significant damage to the floor and the walls, as well as the pews themselves. And he pleaded, "Please don't allow this enormous piece of our city's history to be devalued by the removal of the 150-year-old pews and the inherent damages to the interior of the structure that would be incurred. Please support the nearly 4,000 citizens of this city that signed a petition asking you to do just that." Jock led the gathering of those signatures. He refused to take "no" as an answer on the interior designation, and continued to press for the designation of the pews especially. His determination was rewarded when the diocese removed its objection to the designation of significant interior items, resulting in interior designation, which is not normally done. Jock was also instrumental in the 2001 fight to save the Jolly Cut, a natural heritage area which meets provincial criteria as an evolved cultural heritage landscape. He personally gathered over half the 5,000 signatures on a petition, which helped convince the council of the day not to sell the pathway used since 1787 to go up and down the Moraine. And recently, Jock has been at the forefront of voices reminding us to preserve the War of 1812 Lundy's Lane battlefield. He's pressed for legislation to transfer the battlefield school property, should it be declared redundant to the municipality. And he was also one of the first to start pressing the city to begin preparations for the upcoming War of 1812. the upcoming War of 1812 bicentennial. So congratulations, Jock, and thank you for all your work. Next up in the, as our recipient in the Natural Heritage category is John Barker. Dr. Barker? Is he here? Oh, oh, dear. I'll quickly outline why he was recognized. For more than 30 years, Dr. Barker has worked diligently for the protection of the environment. From his youth, he has been vigorously involved in important issues affecting the beauty and livability of Niagara, issues such as farmland and historic preservation, and the protection of valley land, streams, forests, and water. In 76, he was one of the founders of the Preservation of Agricultural Land Society, which currently employs him as a researcher. But his efforts go far beyond his paid duties. He's been a familiar face here as a spokesperson propels whenever prime farmlands are under urbanization pressure, or a creek, wetland, groundwater recharge area, forest, woodlot, or other significant natural heritage features threatened by development. He's always here to remind us through both written and verbal submissions about its value and why it's important for it to be protected and preserved. Highly knowledgeable and passionately committed to conserving what of our natural heritage remains in the Niagara area, he's a familiar face at other local council chambers as well, fighting for biodiversity and against heedless urban sprawl. And he was an excellent choice for the Natural Heritage category award. Lifetime Achievement recipient this year is Robert Cormier. Is Bob here with you? Okay. Bob is an excellent example of lifetime commitment to the preservation and promotion of the heritage of the city of Niagara Falls. He is a very enthusiastic supporter. Before he came involved in heritage, he was an active leader of the scouting movement for many years, working to develop the youth in his care. Since then, he's spent thousands of hours researching local genealogy. He was a longtime member of the Friends of Stamford Village, including advocacy for the preservation of the Stamford Green, which is the only preserved village green in Canada. He was their town prior for many years and continues to promote both the village and the city wherever he goes. He's an extremely dedicated volunteer at the city of Niagara Falls Museums, has spent hundreds of hours at the museums helping to organize the archival collections. He carries out research, helps with most museums' special events and public programs. He's the kind of event, or kind of volunteer who prefers to keep low-key. He'd rather not trumpet his accomplishments. And he's rarely featured in the local media for his good works, but he's the kind of volunteer who works quietly, will be, is terribly, terribly missed when he isn't there. He lives and breathes the history of Niagara Falls and shares it freely with everyone and is really an outstanding example of a lifetime achievement in heritage preservation in our community. Cultural heritage, the cultural heritage category, our recipient this year is Marie Henry. Marie? Go on down. Marie is one of the unsung heritage heroes in our community. She has been actively involved in the community for many years, has contributed significantly to the growth of the heritage community and the protection of heritage resources. She's been a member of the Niagara Antique Power Association since 1980 and has filled the roles of treasurer, secretary, and vice president during that time. She's a lifelong member as well of the Willby Historical Society and has held the position of secretary since 1995. She has an obvious love for rural history and works constantly to promote the preservation of our rural heritage treasures. She's been a vocal advocate for the upkeep of the Willby Township Hall and keeping it a viable community gathering place. She's also been a member of the Niagara Falls Board of Museums for six years. She spends countless hours of her time volunteering in all aspects of the museum's operation, including visitor services, research, general office, help, and much more. Throughout all these years, she's chosen to stay out of the limelight. She prefers to work behind the scenes where her always pleasant and cheerful attitude can shine. Marie is truly a heritage superstar who goes above and beyond to preserve and protect our community's rural heritage. And last, but certainly not least, this year's Lieutenant Governor's Award recipient is John Juken. John, come on down. This is going to be brief because it would be just a mammoth task to try and describe all that John has done over the years. Although his work in heritage is how he earns his living, he has given of his time, knowledge, energies, and efforts far beyond the work he has been paid to perform. An archaeologist, certified appraiser, and heritage resource consultant, he has become a walking encyclopedia of heritage knowledge, was called upon by the news media, heritage organizations, and individual citizens alike. In addition to accepting contract work, he's also served on the boards of institutions such as the St. Catherine's Board of Museums, the Willbanks School of Restoration Arts, the St. Catherine's Municipal Heritage Committee. He's repeatedly offered his time and expertise whenever called upon to our own heritage committee. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. John has loomed so large for so long in heritage circles in the Niagara region and beyond that attempting to compile a comprehensive list of his voluntary contributions to the cause of heritage preservation would just be beyond what we could do tonight. So he is a real giant on our heritage front. Well done, well deserved. Congratulations, John.
If I could just say, please, one very, thank you very much, Counselor Wing. Certainly, Niagara Falls and the Niagara region is one of the areas of earliest, sort of earliest spiritual center. And consequently, we have a huge inventory of historic structures and a material culture here in the city of Niagara Falls, which we're proudly striving to preserve. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank council for your continued efforts to work in the heritage community to help us preserve those things. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Members of council as well, this evening we have some special guests. Joining us this evening are the Niagara Falls Red Raiders Midget Girls basketball team. I had the pleasure this evening of introducing them as the Ontario Basketball Association Division III Provincial Champions. And at the beginning of May, the Niagara Falls Red Raider Midget Girls won Division III of the Ontario Basketball Provincial Championship held in Sudbury, Ontario. The team won five consecutive games, including two wins over top C12 CYO to win their first provincial gold medal. In the final game against the London Titans, Ali Balicero and Natalie Johns, led by the Raiders with 14 and 11 points respectively, unraveled to a 36-29 victory. Kara Rosenkranz, Rachel Manusten, and Julia Pascoe were dominant on the boards, while Ashley Nehru, Courtney Santin, and Allison Mosari and Briar Ola all played exceptional defense in the timely steals. A single loss would have eliminated the team from the competition. These determined young ladies battled extremely hard and were crowned worthy champions. The Red Raiders Midget Girls have played together for four years with most of the same members. Two years ago, the girls placed third at provincials, and the 2009-2010 year began fairly slowly with injuries to two key players. However, over the last, however, over the last four tournaments, they placed fourth, third, and second in the provincial gold as well in succession. Coach Jim Balicero noted that the girls are true ambassadors for the city of Niagara Falls as they display good sportsmanship and an excellent work ethic. Their greatest strength is the closeness amongst team members, and the total team effort required to win the provincial gold, and these girls succeeded by winning five straight games. So I'm going to call the team players up and coaches as well. So first of all, I'd like to call the first, actually, I'll call the coaches, Mr. Jim Balicero and Bill Jackman to join up here.
Well, I'd like to thank the city of Niagara Falls for recognizing us. It was an excellent opportunity for us to come out here, but it was also on behalf of Mr. Peter Angelo and Mayor Salisi, who was instrumental in inviting us, so we're really very thankful. And just a great effort. The girls played very hard and were very worthy of the support. Thank you very much.
The first recipient is Ali Balicero. And we'll call on Kara Rosenkranz. Kara? Okay, and Rachel Manusten? We, counsel, are always very proud and pleased to recognize our champions, especially when they become provincial champions. And ladies, there's something about the Red Raider Raiders lady that produces a lot of champions and a lot of hard work, so we want to acknowledge you on behalf of members of council. Congratulations for being great ambassadors and for your achievement this year. Thank you so much.
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a proposed group home at 5823 Temperance Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, April 30, 2010, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask the acting director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment, Mr. Bob Pulowicz, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We'll start off here with just a general picture of the subject property. And next, we'll move to the location. It's in an older area of the city, primarily residential to the north and commercial along Ferry Street to the south. This is the actual building envelope. You can see it's an older building. It's had several uses over the years. It occupies most of the property. This was one item the members of council asked for at the previous public meeting on this matter, where there was a layout of the actual units. The upper floor is to the right. There are a total of seven, pardon me, 10 units in the upper floor, and the lower floor a total of seven. This is just an air photograph of the shot. Again, the commercial is primarily to the south, Ferry Street to lower area, and residential both to the north, east, and pardon me, to the west and to the east. As far as some background information, the applicant's requesting an amendment to the general commercial zoning category in our zoning bylaw to add a group home of up to 17 persons, and also to recognize the existing sitting of the building. So if the bylaws approved, we would actually detail the exact boundaries of the building on the bylaw amendment and to allow for one parking space. As mentioned, there was a previous hearing on this application. There was a neighborhood open house held in January. This is part of our typical planning exercise now. There was no one that attended the public meeting. We came to council with the public meeting and a recommendation report. Council deferred the matter to tonight. We had a second open house on April 27, and no members of the public attended that as well. Getting into the official plan, the land is designated tourist commercial in our official plan. We do allow, when there is surplus commercial lands, to actually allow residential uses such as a group home when there is excess demand of the commercial properties. The land is in a predominantly residential area, although the commercial to the south, so we call it a transition kind of area. The proposed use complies with the official plan in the following manner. Land is surplus to the commercial need. It's a small size, so it lacks onsite parking, limits its potential for commercial use. Third point, the group home is a typical residential use that provides an appropriate transition between commercial uses and residential uses. The building has achieved a degree of compatibility over the years. Group homes should generate less traffic and parking demands than a commercial use would. And the applicant has demonstrated that a single parking spot can be provided on the site. With respect to the zoning bylaw, the applicant has requested the group home to be a site-specific within the general commercial zone to accommodate the 17 residents or up to 17 residents. Its purpose is to provide that transitional housing and prepare the individuals that are living in the unit to independent living. So eventually, they'll be at this establishment for a short period of time and then be part of the community. I think that's the long-term goal we have for this development. The facility is intended to serve individuals with mental health issues such as brain, acquired brain injury. There will be, or they will have been discharged from the hospital, referred to the group home by the Canadian Mental Health Association or the Community Health Center, who are readily, or who are ready to participate and be part of transitional living. One staff, full-time staff, person per shift to serve the facility, assisted by the group home's directors, that's what we've learned. There will be additional staff for cooking purposes and also cleaning staff. And we've also learned that the applicant has indicated that more staff will be hired as necessary. So if in the evaluation there is a need for two full-time staff, that in fact will happen. Continually planning analysis, the facility is not a group home licensed by the province, but in our definition of group home, it does include those people who have, by reason of some mental health requirement, of a need to live in a group living environment will be well, for their well-being, will be served by such residential development. The proposed facility can be viewed as a form of transitional housing, as I stated, and the occupants will eventually seeking their own personal living accommodations off-site and in the community. One of the issues last time came up about governing licensing of group homes. In this case, the individuals will be living in a supervised accommodation, but not to the extent where it has to be licensed provincially or federally. We would license this operation under what we call a second-level lodging house bylaw. That bylaw is pretty comprehensive. It has lots of requirements, and this council has the opportunity to revoke, cancel that license if it so wishes. So that operation has to be clearly well-run, if you will, and will be controlled through the bylaw licensing process of the city. The regulations, including staffing- Uh, the regulations, um, including staffing and facilities are included in this bylaw. Uh, the group home complies with the, uh, bylaw in the terms of its physical space and its washroom facilities that, that are required for the seventeen residents. Another issue was the inspection of group homes, and that's, um, the regional health's responsibility. They will in fact, um, uh, will inspect the facility at least three times per year for food safety and once per year for general maintenance and sanitation. And I think if there was a requirement that there was a need, uh, they would also, um, you know, um, uh, pay a visit and, and investigate any, any, uh, issues that may have arise, uh, arisen. So just in summary, uh, we believe, uh, from a planning perspective, uh, the application can be supported. It's, uh, permitted in the official plan. Uh, the group home is a, an appropriate transition, uh, between commercial and residential. The building has existed for many years. It has achieved a degree of compatibility. The group home is not expected to have a negative impact on the adjacent land uses, and there is the provision for one onsite parking available. So the final recommendation we have, that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment application to permit the property to be used as a municipally licensed group home for up to seventeen persons, subject to provisions of the onsite parking space. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bola-Brook. I appreciate your comments. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section thirty-four subsection nineteen of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak for the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Please come forward. The third time, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? If you'd come forward, please come forward, ma'am. If you would be kind enough to give us your name and address, we'd appreciate that.
My name is Catherine Mityuk. I live in seventy-two thirty-eight Parkdale Street. I'm president of Ukrainian Orthodox Church, and I have, uh, some people in church who's old and needed help, and they have, uh, a pension very low. The Fitzcare is, uh, which one I have, uh, one Mrs. O'Darren who's sitting here, eighty-nine years old. She was already in this, uh, in the Fitzcare. She liked it. She don't have no relative. She don't have no place to go. When they closed the Fitzcare, one employee take her home, and she keep her here up to today. And June thirty, she have, um, noticed vacancies from her home because, uh, she don't wanting care her anymore. So Helen don't have no place to go. Please, please help to open Fitzcare back because I have eight people, uh, in church who have a very low income, who have very low, like, one thousand two hundred dollars a month, uh, uh, pension. They cannot afford it to go to, uh, another place. Only Fitzcare, those people with good heart to open this Fitzcare to help the people with low income. Please have a heart for Helen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone other than the applicant again who wishes to speak further? Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on then. At this time, council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Salz and members of council. We thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding our organization Fitzcare Support Living Facility, which is located at five-eight-two-three Temperance Avenue in Niagara Falls.
Just for the record, please, if you'd just give us your name so everyone else...
My name is Alexander Kegmanov. My background is the Health Administration.
Good, thank you, Alexander.
And I also like to thank those members of the council and the mayor for stopping by and viewing our project that is under renovation, and also the fire chief, Lee Smith. He wasn't present today, but he was attending the facility as well. We're here to ask for council to approve the zoning bylaw amendment application to permit the property to be used as a licensed group home for up to seventeen persons, considered a second-level lodging house. Just to clarify, our clients will be those that have been treated for mental illness and are working their way back into the community. Our facility is considered a transitional place of residence foremost. Please note in your information under fire service, I would just like to point out that we have not had two fires. One was testing the system and staff didn't inform the other staff person, and they took immediate action and called the fire department. And the second was a resident went to an area of the home that was to have been locked after the worker left the area and the lower level of the home that was under construction at that time. Due to this unfortunate mishap, we will close down to deal with the fire code violation. And until we comply with the regulation, we will not be able to operate. We are very eager to work and meet all the requirements set out by the fire service department. Once we are operating and will be visited by the Department of Health, we are also working with, with, to make sure that we are taking all the right steps in preparation of food for our clients. We will have regular visits to our facility to ensure our food handling and prepare preparation is up to the standards outlined by the Department of Health. Staff will consist of two full-timers of the day with a person that will prepare nutritional meals three times a day with two snacks. One full-time staff on, or on through the night and a staff person for cleaning. We only have one parking spot, as was mentioned, and have been informed by the city staff that the land in front of the city owned and could be leased in front of the, uh, could be listed from the city, giving us a total of four parking spaces. This would be used mostly by staff as a majority of our clients wouldn't have a vehicle. And we have also referred letters that actually, a tie correspondent attached from the organizations that support our project. It's Niagara Falls Regional Hospital. It's also Community Mental Health Association and also the, uh, Health Centre, Community Health Centre as well. So this organization will actually refer us as our clients.
Thank you very much, Alex. Are there any questions from members of council of the presenter? Uh, yes, Council Fisher.
Thank you. There is a drawing here. This drawing shows me several rooms, but it gives me no measurements. Could you tell me the size of one of these? I, I assume they're a bedroom. Are they a bed-sitting room, bedroom? And also, uh, how many washrooms per bedroom, or how many bedrooms per washroom?
Um, according to the public health that attending actually our facility, so the size of the room is above the standard requirement.
What would that be, please? You don't know the size of the room?
Eleven by thirteen.
Eleven by thirteen?
By thirteen.
And there's a closet in there?
Yes, it is.
And you have how many bedrooms per washroom?
There are five washrooms in the facility.
According to the public health standards, it should be one per eight person.
One for what?
One per eight people.
And the common room where they're going to enjoy television in that. I, from the last, the meeting, I think you told us it was in the lower level.
Yeah, it will be a big lounge area, but also a big dining area, which is can combine actually.
I'm talking about the entertainment area now. Let's not get confused.
Yeah, but the dining...
It's downstairs.
Yes, downstairs, it's like...
How large are the windows in the basement?
So, as they will be enlarged according to the Fire Marshal Department requirements because they will be enlarged and the ceiling should be actually increased in height by nine inches.
But you're going to enlarge the basement windows?
Yes.
How many?
All of them.
All of them?
Well, how many is all of them?
How many windows we have? Six, seven. Seven windows.
And so, so this is for, um, people who have a mental disability and they're going to be coming back into society, and they have to go down a flight of stairs to the basement, to the recreation. Can you tell me about the stairs?
The stairs will be quite thick.
Would they be about thirteen stairs going down to the lower level?
No, there's no certain stairs. Uh, six or seven.
Six or seven?
Yes.
And how much yard area is out the back for these people to enjoy?
The yard area?
Because there's no parking, and I, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, well, there doesn't appear to be much yard area.
It's a small yard area, but possibly just, uh, enough, not for the seating, but...
There will be enough room there for a couple of picnic tables and sitting area.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, members of council? Council Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Uh, where, where are you getting your referrals from?
We're getting referrals from the, uh, organization. One is, it's, uh, Niagara Falls Central Hospital. And it's, uh, Community... Niagara Falls Hospital.
Niagara Falls General Hospital?
General Hospital, yes. And we have...
Have they been through the facility?
Yes, of course. We had actually, uh, the letter correspondents attached from Steve Batarok, who is actually a social worker from, uh, Mental Health Department of the hospital. And he already worked with us and he strongly recommended us because we provide the proper services on our facility. And other organization is Community Health Association. And we had a meeting with Bob Barkman, who is actually supporting our project as well because we've been referred, we had some clients referred by this organization as well. And also Community Health Centre as well will be referred by other medical professionals.
And then who, who pays for their accommodations here?
It's, uh, it's, uh, basically it's two sources. One is its, uh, Ontario Disability Support Program, or the, or DSP, and, uh, also it can be privately funded as well.
Privately funded?
Yeah, but people can pay, family members can just support as well. Yes.
Uh, I, I didn't understand, uh, what the, uh, the comments were by the previous speaker. She was talking about the lady there who would like to live in here.
She was referred from the hospital, actually, when she moved in. She was referred to the hospital because she has sometimes, uh, memory failure and, and had some small mental health issues as well, forgetting to say.
Is this a transitional facility or permanent?
Well, actually, just, uh, it wasn't transitional for her unless we can find the proper accommodation for her. She was just temporary transferred to our facility. She was very happy there. I mean, uh, she got the best service she ever had, unless we find... I'm sorry.
Where was she? What facility?
In our facility she was, just for a small while. Yes, yes. For the short period of time when it would be operating.
You mean she's been living in there recently?
Yes. Not recently. Recently, we're talking about last year, until last year unless we had to shut down the building.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad I took the time to come and have a look at this because, uh, certainly opened my eyes about, uh, what the facility was all about. And, uh, I'll save my comments for later.
Any other questions from members of council? Yes, Council Maves?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, in the event, this is not a nursing home, I presume?
No, no, it's not.
So, uh, should this lady become seriously ill, where would she go from there? Back to the hospital or...
Well, if she becomes seriously ill, we definitely have to send her back to the hospital. Or otherwise, she has to be, if she needs extra care and if having my evaluation to the point that she, we can't provide her care on our facility, she will be transferred to the nursing home.
Who, who would determine that?
It's a, a Community Care Access Centre. We're working with them closely. And if the person actually, if it determines the person has to be transferred, so it will be so.
Okay, thank you. And, and also through you, uh, your worship, to Mr. Bola-Brook. Uh, you mentioned in your, in your presentation that there are safeguards in place as per previous motions from years back to safeguard in the event if things aren't carried out properly in this facility, that, uh, council has the wherewithal to shut them down. Is that correct?
Correct. That's, that's the license? Uh-huh. Okay. Um, it, I, I went through the bylaw and basically, uh, it does require that, uh, they keep active records of the individuals in the facility. Uh, when they leave, uh, their, their prescriptions have to be monitored, uh, in a separate file maintained. And, uh, yes, um, the license is granted by the city, can be revoked if, uh, a problem does persist and not get corrected.
So there are safeguards in place?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions by members of council, of those present this evening? Yes, Council DeDaddy.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Uh, and I took a tour, uh, this afternoon. And my question was, um, I know there had been a fire before. Maybe you can explain, um, what safeguards have been, uh, brought forward by the fire department that you have to adhere to for future? You mentioned about the, the windows and whatnot.
Yeah, we had actually, yep, uh, as a fire marshal attending our facility and actually previously as well. And, uh, he mentions that in order, actually, we have to install now access smoke detectors, of course, and fire extinguisher. We're talking about, we have to install the sprinkler system in the building as well. And also, we're talking about the increasing the height of the ceiling in the basement and, uh, the size of the windows, which is actually just comply with the fire marshal requirement. So basically that's what. And also the increase of staff members on the, in the facility in order to, that we can properly supervise the people.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Are those present? Okay, having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Council Thompson?
Well, I guess I'll, uh, these guys can sit down. I say they can sit down.
Well, it's fine. Thank you very much.
Anyway, I, uh, I'm not talking from, uh, lack of experience here. For twenty-seven years, I inspected facilities with the Health Department to, uh, house, uh, people in nursing homes and, and other group homes. This, uh, our bylaw suggests that, uh, ten is the maximum number for any, uh, group home, and particularly with mental health issues. I think that probably is even a stretch. We're talking about seventeen people, in, uh, my opinion. Very small confined quarters. Ten in the basement level, but if you walked in there today, there's, uh, probably a six-foot, uh, uh, ceiling, maybe six foot two. I don't know, and I may be out on that, but very low. Uh, the windows are probably, uh, two by two. So they're going to enlarge those, but, uh, I can assure you that, uh, I wouldn't want to be housed in the basement level at the far end of this facility, uh, for any length of time. I, uh, walked through the other day and, uh, somebody suggested I walked through and had a phone call and ran out. Wasn't a case of running out. I was, uh, been through the whole property, including the backyard, which is probably about six feet deep. So there won't be any recreational activities going on out there, but, uh, I left because, uh, I'd seen enough. I, uh, was very concerned about what they're suggesting here for people with mental health issues. So, uh, I, uh, would not certainly support seventeen people with mental health issues at this location. The correspondence that we have is very superficial. I see no reports from the fire department. I see, uh, a basic, uh, report from the region, uh, um, planning and health, uh, which basically says they're going to inspect it three times a year. Anything over ten people, they have to go and inspect, uh, the kitchen facilities, uh, three times a year. So that doesn't give me any confidence. Uh, we created the second-level housing, uh, uh, bylaw simply because there wasn't anything in the province that would protect people, uh, in living quarters housed, uh, in group homes like this. So we created our own in the city of Niagara Falls to, uh, give us some controls over that. I, uh, I just, uh, have a, uh, very bad feeling about, uh, people having this facility there for profitable reasons. Uh, this is not a nonprofit group. And, uh, um, I would, I would really like, uh, everybody in this council to have the opportunity to walk through this facility before they make any decision on it. But as far as I'm concerned, uh, in its present form and with seventeen people, uh, I'm not going to support it.
Are there any comments? Council Wing? Counselor Wing?
I have a lot of concerns as well. I don't have a problem with a group home for a reasonable number of people, but I have a lot of concerns with this. First of all, the track record. They were, according to our report and in their own admission, previously housing people in this building when it was zoned tourist commercial and apparently had no fire extinguishers, no smoke alarms. You know, this is truly worrisome.
Excuse me, please. Just order.
The numbers. I have previous experience working in group homes, and I can tell you seventeen people with challenges of this type, you're going to need a lot of staff there, and I don't know where they're all going to park because there's one parking space. You know, there was some correspondence handed out last time that I looked for this time. Usually anything previous is attached to the report, this time it wasn't, but there was some correspondence handed out last time by the proponents, which talked about a whole variety of people, people with drug addictions, I remember being noted as potential occupants. And, you know, now we're hearing that there's elderly people who are looking to be here as well, and I'm just thinking about all the suggestions that have been thrown out and the type of, the mix of people that are going to be in there. Seventeen, to me, without a lot of supervision, does not sound safe for the staff, it does not sound safe for the occupants. I have numerous concerns with this, and there is just no way that I'll support it either. In fact, I'll make a motion that we deny the application.
A motion by Counselor Wing to deny. Is there a second to the motion? Counselor Fisher. Any further discussion? Counselor DiDaddy?
Yes, worship, I'm not going to support a denial. I think Counselor Thompson's suggestion that everybody should take an opportunity to go view the facility, I think it's worthwhile to make a decision once you do see it. Yeah, I, the first thing that jumped out to me did seem like a lot of people. However, when I got there, it's much bigger than I expected. Looks much bigger than it did from the road. I believe it's five thousand square feet. And in terms of the amount of people required and whatnot, I don't know if that's this council's jurisdiction to determine that. I would hope that it would be the groups that deal with the mental health that would dictate to us the amount of people that would be required. I would support deferring this to tell everyone at council to the next meeting has a chance to go down. I believe maybe a half or a third of us have actually seen the facility, worship, and then at least this way it could be a little more meaningful dialogue.
Well, are you making a motion? We have a motion on the floor, but...
Then I'll make a motion for deferral, worship.
Okay, it's your second, Counselor Peter Angelo. Motion to defer is non-debatable. All those in favor of deferral, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four. Opposed? To the motion, matter is deferred. Thank you. We'll contact you, sorry, Mr. Clerk.
I would also suggest then that if you want it to come back the next meeting, that you make a motion that we don't have to advertise it to the public. I mean, obviously, we've had a couple of circulations already, there hasn't really been much public coming out, but just pass a motion saying that further public notification will not be necessary.
Yeah, I'd make that motion, worship.
Moved by Counselor DiDaddy. Seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. We'll have this brought forward the next council meeting. Members of council, this evening I'd like to pass our condolences to Mr. Trent Dark, our Director of Human Resources, on the passing of his father, Mr. Clifford Dark, this past weekend. Trent, our thoughts and prayers are certainly with you and your family. I'd like to share with the public the details of the visit by the Right Honorable Prime Minister on May twenty-first. We were pleased to have him in Niagara Falls as he gave his support to our Niagara Falls Museum Legacy Project. This is a project that, as you know, our museum board envisioned, and we supported from its inception. We lobbied our provincial and federal governments, who each contributed millions to this important development. We have been touting the positive economic impacts of the project and its ability to act as a catalyst for growth in our community. Even these hugely positive impacts pale in comparison to the significance that this project has from an historic perspective. I'd like to share with you some of the thoughts the Prime Minister reiterated when he was here. He reinforced that the battles that took place here in historic Drummondville were paramount to the inception and creation of our country. He was here to support this project because it will become a place where history, the history of our area, the history of our country, in fact, will be preserved. It will become a place where people can view artifacts, hear stories, and learn the details of the events that made up our country as a place where young people can interact as well with displays, view reenactments, and get involved in history. We celebrate our great bond with our American friends to the South and the longest peaceful border in the world, but we also remember historic Drummondville's place in the War of eighteen twelve, the war that determined which flag we salute and which country we call home. We thank Prime Minister Harper for his support of the Museum Legacy Project and for giving it the significance it deserves as a defining moment in Canada's history. We are Canadians because of the War of eighteen twelve, and the Prime Minister's recognition of this great importance of this project really puts in perspective what we have, have here. Now that we've broken ground on this project, we have the potential to create a monumental spot for visitors and residents to share in the history that defines us. And special thanks to our Prime Minister, to our RMP, Rob Nicholson, Minister Goodyear, Provincial Minister Dugood, and our MPP, Kim Crater, for all of their support. On another positive note, Niagara Falls, Niagara Falls is also pleased to be the host city for the Human Bodies exhibit, and we had the pleasure of attending the opening of the showing last week, and this is an outstanding educational experience, and I would encourage people to attend. Bodies is being hosted at the Niagara Exhibition Center and features the utmost in an anatomic learning experience. This is truly an exciting addition to our offerings to visitors and one that locals will really enjoy as well. There are special local rates, and I would encourage you to visit their website for more information. The website is bodiesniagara.com. On Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, we had the pleasure of honoring city employees at our annual employee recognition evening. We congratulate our long-service award recipients, retirees of two thousand and nine, and our six employee excellent award winners. It's always a great opportunity to thank the good people who work at the city of Niagara Falls and to keep our departments running efficiently and provide good service to our residents. So thank you again to our employees, especially those who were honored last week. Now, looking ahead, I'd like to bring you, your attention to two important upcoming events in our community. First, this weekend is Springlicious, our downtown food festival. We are highlighting some exceptional entertainment this year along with a wide variety of culinary options. I welcome residents and visitors to visit Queen Street this weekend on June fourth, fifth, and sixth for an outstanding lineup of entertainment and shows. We always look forward to an excellent crowd for this event, and this year is no different. I encourage you to learn more about the schedule of performance at queenstreetniagarafalls.com. And finally, our July first Canada Day celebrations is quickly approaching. Our staff and volunteers are planning a wonderful lineup of events and activities at Optimus Park, happening all morning along with our renowned parade, which will begin at ten a.m. We invite all of you to come out and enjoy the festivities. And new this year, we'll be hosting a citizenship ceremony inside the Optimus Park at one p.m., Optimus Park Hall, that is, and our honorary parade marshal this year is Greg Cruen. He will be performing as well on stage at two p.m., and we welcome all to attend. That concludes my remarks for this evening. And we'll move on, if I can, to the communications and comments of the city clerk. Our first item on the agenda is the Clifton Hill BIA, two thousand and ten budget for council's consideration for the approval of council. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Second item is the Chippewa Public Docs Committee, that the public docs be transferred to their stewardship with the docs split evenly on each side of the Willam River, east of the Whiteman Bridge. Recommendation to refer to staff. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any further discussion? Having seen none, yes, Counselor Maves?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, we're into the boating season and everything right now, is there any way we can fast-track that? I think that's important where the business people are.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, we're fast-tracking and we're bringing it to the next meeting. Fact of the matter is...
As fast as we can go?
That's as fast as we can go, especially if they want to put it on the other side of the river, they're going to have to get approvals from a myriad of different government agencies. We just didn't have enough time with the correspondence coming in to do a report to give council all of the information, but we will definitely have a report the next meeting.
I think that's vital to the business people in that area, if we can do something quickly. Thank you.
So, we have a motion before us, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you very much. I remember three, we have requests for Frank Uzalenga requesting that the burning bylaw be amended to allow chimeneas and fire pits. Recommendation is to refer to staff for report. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Once again, you've heard the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Request from Mary Masleck, requesting that a monument be allowed to exceed the permitted highlight or heights within the cemetery bylaw. Again, recommendation to refer to staff. Yes, Counselor Thompson?
Well, it's been with staff for many months. In fact, I've been trying to assist her for quite some time. Part of the reason I brought up that we review the cemetery bylaw completely to be more flexible with respect to these matters, and also take an opportunity or an advantage of an opportunity to generate revenue for the cemetery operations by permitting larger monuments. If you go through the cemetery, any part of it, there's no consistency or conformity whatsoever. There are large ones, small ones, beside large ones. The old section is a prime example of, really, in my opinion, what a cemetery should look like. I think we've carried the conformity too far, and I'm hoping that we're going to come in with a report with respect to this whole issue that is going to resolve these problems so we don't have to deal with them individually. However, there has been flexibility with respect to these matters in the past, and I think that this is a minor issue. It is a beautiful monument, and I would move that we work with Mary Moffett to approve this monument for the cemetery.
Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Clerk?
There's a covering memo from myself based on comments from the other staff. Currently, the way your cemetery bylaw reads, you don't have the authority to approve it. There's no variances within the bylaw. Obviously, we've been directed to come back with a report that may allow that, but right now, in your current bylaw, it's not permitted.
Well, members of council, it's Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, well, if it passes, I think we can find a way to do it. There can be an amendment to the bylaw if it has to come in later or do whatever you want. I think what I'm trying to do here is accomplish the objective that people who would like to have a larger monument for a family member in the cemetery can have the opportunity to do so. And there has been flexibility in the past because I've been involved in it, similar to this one here, so my motion stands.
Okay, we have a motion on authority, further discussion? All those in favor? Yes, Counselor Wing, you raising your hand?
Actually, I had a question. Is it not possible for us to amend the bylaw tonight? Because if I recall from reading the whole package, there's concerns for cultural reasons about getting this done in the very near future.
Well, Mr. Beaman, would you like to...
So if we need to amend the bylaw, then maybe we should do that right now.
Mr. Beaman? Excuse me, please. Order, please. Mr. Beaman?
There's nothing stopping the process from being amended. The other possible is that we think that the venue is retroactive today, and the law may therefore determine that there is a possibility of changing this particular situation, and in order to put on flexibility to the cemetery, of course, there is... But I know, I know that I suggest that we should sort of, in this, follow our council's more authority, change the bylaw, as long as, or so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beaman. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I appreciate Counselor Wing's comments, but I really would like to do this in a constructive and informed manner in the future, rather than just amend the by, what are we going to amend the bylaw to permit this? So I'd like this to be passed, but I would be patient and wait for a all-encompassing report, which hopefully would give us a whole new trend in looking at what is being done at the cemetery, hopefully.
So, Counselor, are you amending your motion? We're asking now for staff report?
No, no, I did that before. That's a few weeks, months ago.
Mr. Clerk?
Well, I gather from Counselor Thompson that what the motion in essence is, is that staff work with the applicant, obviously, to accomplish the request and amend the bylaw parting with.
You can come in with a report whenever. All I'm looking at is this one right here, approving this one, because there has been flexibility out there, and we'll deal with the overall changes to the cemetery and the bylaw in the future when the C.A.L. brings it reported.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on this matter? Having seen none, we'll call the, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion is carried, thank you. Move on to the next item on the agenda, number five, Reverend Ken Smith requesting a thousand dollar donation for the, for a Global Rotary Club project shelter box for relief, for Haitian relief, I should say. Recommendations for the consideration of council. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, I think that Mr. Ari Pita had some correspondence as well as myself, and I said that I would be happy to collect pledges from members of council, and I don't know if there's a staff person that would be willing to collect some pledges as well. I think they're looking for a thousand dollars so that they can purchase a shelter box.
Okay, the pleasure. Mr. Clerk?
We've already brought it to our social committee, who raises money for various worthy charities, and we're willing to commit two hundred and fifty dollars towards the cause.
Okay, so perhaps we can coordinate a fundraising effort to assist in purchasing a shelter box? So if council wants to endorse the idea, if Counselor Peter Angelo wants to make that motion, is that, is that fair enough? Okay. Is there a second, or Counselor DiDaddy? Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
There was one correspondence that the Lundy's Lane BIA forwarded to us regarding a proposed entertainment venue on Lundy's Lane. The recommendation is that the applicant, who's not the Lundy's Lane BIA, be directed to make the appropriate zoning bylaw amendment application.
Yes, Counselor Wing?
Yeah, just a comment. The board is very keen on getting more tourism-related development on Lundy's Lane, and they were quite excited by the opportunity, especially for another tourism attraction. So I guess this is another case where they're encouraging council to fast-track this in any way possible. I'm not sure how long it would take for the bylaw amendment application to go through the course, but it looks like the opportunity might be lost for this summer, it's going to take a while.
Mr. Clerk?
Well, really, it's up to an applicant to make an application for a zoning bylaw amendment, and my understanding is that there had been inquiries a number of weeks ago, and really, it sort of behooves the applicant to come in and make the application if a rezoning is required, and unfortunately, a rezoning is required in this situation. Staff, obviously, is more than happy to work with the applicant and try to expedite these as quickly as possible within the, within the requirements of the Planning Act, but it really, they've got to come in here and make that application ASAP.
Yes. Counselor Thompson?
Through you to the planner. Is this, does this necessitate a tourist commercial out on Lundy's Lane? Why does it have to have a rezoning?
The tent structure is permitted on a ten-day basis. Beyond that, it would require a zoning bylaw amendment. It would be probably zoned as a temporary use, which can be up to three years. Unfortunately, we have to go through the process, which, you know, we have to do our due diligence, is giving public notice, have a public hearing, and there's appeal period, so it's, it would take a couple of months anyway for this to happen.
How do we manage to do the other one for these bodies so quickly? They made the application, obviously.
Right, we did our circulation, probably did take a couple of months.
Well, it's unfortunate, there's a real opportunity for some entertainment out on Lundy's Lane, which they want and need desperately, and if there's anything that can be done through the staff to accommodate this in any quick manner, it's probably off till next year, but hopefully they're still around.
We have a recommendation, again, that the applicant be directed to make a zoning bylaw amendment to the, application to the, to City Hall, so we can proceed with that. Okay, for council's information? Do you want to move that, that recommendation?
Receive and file.
Okay, receive and file. Counselor Maves? Want to move that recommendation? Okay, moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you very much. We have ratification of Community Services Committee actions. I'm going to ask the acting chair, Counselor DiDaddy, to present, please.
Thank you, worship. Ratification of the committee, Community Services Committee meeting tonight. The following items are to be ratified for tonight's meeting. Minutes of the April twenty-six, two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten meeting be approved. Two, the reports, MW two thousand and ten twenty-five, update on the main and ferry area, that this report be received for information, and that committee support the proposed implementation scheme for the capital works improvement program for the historic Drummondville CIP area. Report MW two thousand and ten thirty-five, downtown revitalization project update for the information to council. Report MW two thousand and ten twenty-eight, lot grading policy, the matter be deferred. Report PD two thousand and ten forty-two, matters arising from the municipal heritage committee, that approval of grants for Spence Weaver Homestead, sixty-five ninety Dunn Street, owners Audrey and Todd Barclay, for the restoration of the veranda on the north side of the two-story portion of the house. Also for James Oswald House, twenty-nine twenty-two Saint Paul Avenue, owner Steve And CAO 2010-05 Council Pending Item List, that the outstanding council request report will be presented on a quarterly basis to keep us informed and also regularly on ongoing matters and under new business, that a meeting of the Armory Ad-hoc Committee be called, that Mr. Essipon's letter be referred to the Railway Ad-hoc Committee, the letter be sent to the Niagara Regional Police advising them of frequent high speed that's been noted on the north end of Montrose Road, that we request radar. And lastly, Worship, that's subject to approval from the Clifton Hill BIA, that motorcycles be allowed to park on Oneida Lane in association with the planned Motorcycle Enthusiasts Weekend. I so move.
Moved by councillor Diodati, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to ratification of in-camera recommendations. Mr. Flir?
Couple of items, Your Worship, that a report on staffing of the swimming pool be brought forward for the next meeting and staff be directed to bring back Gale Center agreements and substantiate financial information from the junior B and junior Cs.
Motion to move that. Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Pleasure of council. Moved the consent agenda by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. All those in favor? Motion is carried. As well, we have a resolution, PD 2010-43 Designation of Downtown Niagara Falls as a tourist district under the Canadian Tourism Orientation. As well, therefore be resolved that the Niagara Falls City Council declares the downtown as a tourist district worthy of tourism-oriented directional tots signage. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Thompson. Any further discussion or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Move on to bylaws. Mr. Flir, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws listed for council's consideration?
Yes, Your Worship, as a result of the deferral of the site alteration report in Community Services, bylaw 2010-78 has to be pulled. As a result, the subsequent bylaws will be numbered one previously, so the bylaws will go from 2010-73 to 2010-80.
Okay, so noted. So if I have a motion to introduce the bylaws, bylaws be given a first reading. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2010-73 to 2010-80 read a first time.
Can I have a motion again to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2010-73 to 2010-80 read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you very much. Any new business this evening? Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I had a declared conflict on the neighborhood, same thing with the sidewalk changes. I did a check then, the public meeting that was held across the road, to get input from the residents. The sidewalk issue was resolved very quickly and amicably, but the residents there were continually concerned about the, and this has been brought up, I think by Alderman Volpatti at one time and again, I think by myself, about the speeding of cars up and down St. Paul Street and the request for a left-hand turn going from Niagara Falls into St. Davids into the neighborhood of St. Davids Development there. The last time it was referred to the region, which is in your report, I think it's 2001. The development has been pretty well built out by now and there is a substantial amount of traffic going in or there and when you're going down St. Paul Street towards, going north towards St. Davids, to try to make a left turn with the speeding vehicles behind you is extremely dangerous and there have been collisions there as a result. If you look at the road pattern there, and I know the region said they would have to acquire property, they probably wouldn't have to acquire property, but they'd have to expand for a left-hand turn there. There are two lanes coming up from St. Davids. If one of those lanes, if they were reversed, two lanes going down and one coming up, you could very easily put a left-hand turn in there and I'm wondering if this request could be made again through our staff at the region and have, I'd definitely like to be at a meeting with them with respect to this to have it considered because it is a safety hazard on the road and I think there are solutions that can be accomplished without a great deal of cost and without a great deal of concern, but certainly the traffic counts have changed substantially since 2001. So I'd make a motion that we investigate the possibility of a safer situation there and also to refer to the regional police for radar to see if we can slow the traffic down there. It's amazing how fast they come up and go down on that particular road because they figure they're past mountain road, everything is free and easy and they don't have any traffic to be concerned about, so I would so move.
Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Other new business? Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to bring up an idea. For a number of years, the city has had or have put money into conservation efforts for water and in the last number of years, the city has bought rain barrels and then we've distributed and distributed them to the residents at a discounted price. This year, council decided that we would put a million dollars into our RAP program, which dealt with the weeping tile removal for a bunch of homes. We are looking at targeting around 300 households in the city to have their weeping tiles removed. Your Worship, in talking with Mr. Holman, he doesn't believe that we'll be able to get to all 300 homes this year, so we're not going to spend all of the money that we allocated. And I brought to him this neat little device that I put in my toilet a couple of weeks ago and what it is, is it's a converter and it converts your toilet into a dual flush and I'm not sure if everyone has seen them, but what happens is your button then gets split into a top button and a bottom button. So if you do a number one, you can press the top button and only 20% of the tank will flush down whatever's in there. And then if you obviously do a number two, then you press the bottom button and your full tank goes out. In essence, Your Worship, what it equates to is it equates to about 15,000, and this is in US terms, gallons per year, that a family of four would save. Estimates, the city of Toronto, region of Halton, they've all done things such as this to help try and conserve water and I guess an average household would save around $80 a year. These retail for only $30, so it's well worth the investment. My hope is that the municipality can purchase a bunch of them and then we can figure out how we're going to distribute them to the residents, either at a discounted rate or we're just going to give them out. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion that we pass this on to Mr. Holman and let him basically direct or administer the program and I know that Mark Richardson for Parks and Rec will be glad to take care of the administration of the project. I also talked with the Park and the City Committee and I know that they would get on board and help with the distribution of them as well. I'm sure that the Mayak Committee would do the same, Your Worship.
Certainly. Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. We have a motion by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diodati. It's an excellent idea. Certainly, water conservation in the past, we've actually, as you know, we purchase low-flow showerheads and things that are similar to that nature, so I think it's a great program. So I think it's an excellent idea. So any other comments from members of council? All those in favor? Raise your hand. Thank you. Any other business? New business? Motion to adjourn?